We will now ask the chairman of conference to give remarks.
Thank you, colleague prime ministers. Since the 39th meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government in Montego Bay last July, we have continued on a path towards making the CSME more effective and more responsive to the needs of community nationals. We have just concluded two days of intense and frank and decisive discussions on the CARICOM single market and economy, during which we all recommitted to ensuring its successful implementation. We have fashioned a path forward for advancing its implementation in a manner that can be measured and for which we can all be held accountable. Critically, the dialogue we had with representatives of the private sector and labour yesterday morning was of immense value, and we were quite pleased to hear their strong commitment to making the CSME work. They submitted solid proposals to make the CSME more effective and the conduct of business within the community more efficient. We have taken careful note of the recommendations they have made. That session with the business leaders and the union heads underline the necessity for a formal, structured and regular interface between the private sector, labour and government. The importance of these sectors was a key element of the Golding Report and something we had discussed in the Jamaican Parliament. We therefore truly welcomed their involvement, and I wish to thank the Prime Minister of Barbados, Prime Minister Motley, for coordinating their involvement. Heads exchanged views on the Golding Report and made valuable contributions on the future of the community from their perspectives. The issues raged, encouraged vibrant discussions and helped to focus our minds on the real challenges and opportunities in our integration movement. Heads also considered a paper written by Prime Minister Gonzales, which together with the Golding Report influenced many of the decisions which we took today. We had an in-depth look at what member states were required to do to advance the CSME and sought to establish timelines for implementation. We have agreed to expand the categories of skilled workers who are free to move within the CSME space. And this expansion would now include agricultural workers, security guards, beauticians and barbers. These are positive developments for people and matters which we have been championing for some time. We considered the implementation plan for Haiti's full participation in the CSME, and we welcome the assistance that that country will receive from the European Development Fund in their efforts to become compliant with the measures to ensure that they can participate in the CSME. We discussed as well the roles of the Caribbean Development Bank and the CARICOM Development Fund in supporting the efforts to propel our growth and development. We agreed to have a special session to discuss issues to deal with transportation at our next intercessional meeting in February 2009. Nineteen. That's the impact of having a meeting up to 9pm. We discussed transportation issues and their critical importance to the success of the CSME in enabling free movement in the region, and we agreed to have a meeting, an intercessional meeting, in February 2019. We have appointed Professor Avinash Bhardad to lead a restructured Commission on the Economy to advise member states on a growth agenda for the community. Other members of the Commission on the Economy are Ms Ngozi Okonjo-Iwela, Ms Therese Turner-Jones, Dr Wendell Samuels, Mr Chester Humphrey, Mr PB Scott, Dr Damian King, Mr Pascal Lammy, Mr George Maguire and Mr Roger McLean. Gregory Maguire. The importance of sharing information about what is happening regionally was also accepted, and we have set up a working group to advise on how best we can have a sustainable information flow to the people of the community about each other and about the integration movement. We are moving towards using a results-based approach to managing the CSME. We have the institutions in place, we have identified the various processes to achieve that, and we will be acting with urgency to ensure that the institutions of CARICOM are efficient, responsive and agile. At this meeting, we have committed to move from talk to action. We have issued a declaration which will be available shortly. My assessment is that the nature of the CARICOM integration movement has changed for the better. I believe leaders have acknowledged that it is now time for action, and the integration movement has taken on a far more practical approach and one that will see more benefits for the people of the region. I wish to point out specifically the energy that has been brought to this new dynamic by Prime Minister Motley and Prime Minister Rowley in ensuring that we were able to come to agreement on the critical issues which are outlined in the declaration soon to be made available. I will invite Prime Minister Motley to make her comments.
Thank you very much, Prime Minister Holness. I want to thank you for your leadership of this process over the last two days. To give a little more context, I think there have been a number of significant decisions that will help us move forward, and essentially, we have agreed to a work plan for myself as lead Prime Minister of the CSME for the next three years. The most important decisions relate to governance first and foremost, that the private sector body and the representative body for labour should be associate institutions of CARICOM, similar to the Caribbean Development Bank, University of the West Indies, University of Guyana. These are all associate bodies with CARICOM and therefore have the right to sit at the table at CARICOM meetings. We've also agreed that we have detailed discussions with the private sector and labour on key aspects of our productive sectors that need immediate action and energy. And those areas that we concentrate on initially will be renewable energy, agriculture and food security, transport, be it maritime or air transport, and ICT. And we believe that the opportunities for immediate action as well as investment for our citizens and our businesses within the region are there, and we will work together with the private sector and labour to make that a reality. Similarly, we are cognizant that there is about $47 billion US dollars in savings within the community, and that we need to find a way of unlocking those savings such that our businesses and our governments can have access to affordable capital, to borrow at affordable rates, while at the same time giving our citizens and companies better options for greater returns on their money than they're currently getting from keeping that money in savings accounts where it is only attracting 0.1% and 0.5% across the region. Specifically, we've also agreed, as Prime Minister Holness said, that we have to review how our institutions are working. You know, when you have things for a long time, you get accustomed to it, but sometimes you have to do a thorough review and clean the cupboard. And we believe that there are some institutions, for example, that have added serious delay. There are some that have not been as strategic as we would like them to be, but we need to pause, do the review. The secretariat will need about 12 months to do that review because there are, what, over 17 institutions within the region? And we want to make sure that we don't ever invite again a situation where lethargy takes over or delay becomes the order of the day, and hence those determinations. Pretty much, the work of the next three years is full. This evening, a number of prime ministers signed the multilateral air services agreement, and therefore, while we have until February 2019 to make that operational, the truth is that we've gone a long way to that this evening. Similarly, we agree that between now and February, we have to address the agricultural, sanitary and phytosanitary matters because that's constraining too many of our farmers and businesses from being able to do the trade within the region, and we've agreed to do that by February 2019. The Protocol on Contingent Rights, the provisional application, a number of us signed this evening. We would have signed the agreement in Montego Bay, but you have to make it operational, and a number of us have signed today to make it operational. I'm not sure we have the exact... We still have another two or three signatures to get, but we anticipate that by February, that Protocol on Contingent Rights will be operational. And we've agreed that administratively, those new categories of workers that Prime Minister Holness referred to will be allowed to move between now and February. Agricultural workers, for whom obviously there is no CVQ or NVQ, but we all know who are the farmers and who are the agricultural workers in our region. We are accustomed seeing them go out sometimes to seasonal programmes outside of the region. Some are already moving within the region. We want to make it seamless for them to do so. Countries like Suriname are badly in need of agricultural workers, and therefore, this is welcome news for them. We've agreed that security guards, Jamaica's been a strong case for security guards to be included in the category of workers. We've now agreed that that should happen so that the difficulties that security guards have been having moving through the region will be a thing of the past. And of course, we reaffirm, because sometimes you have to spell it out, that when we said artists, we also really meant beauticians and barbers, but we've spelt it out to make it absolutely clear that especially in our region where people like how to do hair, that they should have the freedom of movement in that respect. I may not be the best person to make these comments and say, like my hair, natural as it is. But these are the real changes that we are making for the lives of ordinary people who can plan out 2019 in a different way than they've had to live for the past few years. Similarly, we agree that we will work with the private sector to have substantive engagement between now and July, the July meeting, so that those four areas of productive sectors that we've spoken about earlier, that we can have tangible plans. And the one that excites me the most is the renewable energy. Why shouldn't the citizens of the Caribbean be investing in companies that provide us renewable energy, particularly since we all know we have to purchase the electricity under power purchase agreement? There is a deemed rate of return that is acceptable in almost every country by our utilities regulators, and therefore, the people who ought to be able to benefit from some of those things are ordinary households and ordinary businesses. And how we work with the private sector to make that a reality, we would like to be able to come to heads by July in St Lucia with a clear plan as to how ordinary Caribbean citizens can benefit from that. The work, the more technical work with respect to COFAAP in terms of a CARICOM financial services agreement, an investment policy and investment code, the integrated capital market and the model securities legislation, we all hope to have completed also by July of this year and to simplify the processes for free movement. We heard the private sector very clearly about the need for a mutual recognition of companies. If I register a company in one country, I shouldn't have to go and register in 10 or 12 different other countries. And therefore, we hope to have mutual recognition of companies by July as well, as well as to give effect to the fact that if you have a CARICOM skills certificate issued by one country, you don't have to go and get it renewed in any other country again. All other countries will recognise that CARICOM skills certificate to make the process easy and free for the applicants so that there is that hassle-free movement that we talk about now to become a reality. We would like to have model legislation for trademark and the harmonisation of business names completed by the July meeting as well, and we hope to be able to have the Committee of Ambassadors help us in a more seamless way in being able to help manage in between meetings. Similarly, we've agreed that the Prime Ministerial Subcommittee Meetings on the Single Market that will take place between intercessional and heads, and there'll be two other meetings per year, will probably meet, should be committees of the whole, of all the heads if they can attend, but it effectively means that the heads will be meeting four times a year as the, twice in full, CARICOM Heads of Government on all matters pertaining to the Caribbean community, not just limited to the CSME, and then twice related to the CSME in order to meet this ambitious agenda that we have put forth. Another key decision that we've made is that we've already established some regional institutions, but in many instances, our countries do not and cannot afford to be able to replicate these institutions at the national level. And in the same way that the Caribbean Court of Justice has national jurisdiction and regional jurisdiction, to put it more simply, it sits as the final court of appeal for a number of countries and then it's a regional interpretation body for others, we believe that there are other institutions whose constitutional documents ought to be amended to allow countries to designate them as national authorities. So the one that comes to mind immediately is the Caribbean Agricultural Health and Food Safety Agency, which is based in Suriname. This is the body that looks after agricultural health and food safety for the region. But we believe, for example, in Barbados, that rather than create a new such body, that we can designate them as our national authority and allow them therefore to serve that process because unless we can have our labs and our markets certified, we can't export fish to Europe, we can't export food produce to other parts of the world. So this is why how a technical issue becomes real for ordinary farmers and fishermen in the Caribbean and vendors. We've also agreed that on the matter of the category of, and I'm not going through everything at this stage, but we agree that we have to simplify the administrative process for the freedom of movement of goods, approved by CoED, and that we hope to do that by the end of 2019, one year from now, as well as to have a regional deposit insurance system and a regional credit information sharing. Credit information sharing is critical because too many of our citizens want to be able to borrow money, and very often, they're denied access to lending institutions because they do not have a credit history. And therefore, it is important that when we have access to information, we can develop it such that people can make decisions on lending them. Similarly, we want to have a single window across the region for companies' registration by the end of next year as well, and this will be a major, major adjustment for us that goes even beyond the mutual recognition and makes it even more, makes it seamless. By the end of next year, as we said, the secretariat should have finished a review of all of the institutions and organs such that we will be able to take a review by early 2020 at the intercessional. And then by the end of 2021, we want to have a single window for intellectual property registration, patents, trademarks, obviously not copyright because you don't register copyright. And by the end of 2021, for those of us who are ready to take the plunge, we want to have full freedom of movement of all Caribbean people within the community. So that when we say to you, and by the end of 2020, we hope the year before to have had the harmonisation of companies law, so that when we say to you that we have had a very productive meeting, it is because we have laid out in clear terms and a roadmap how Caribbean people will be able to move, to invest their money, to be able to have hassle-free options in terms of how to conduct their business, because it's one thing to have removed the laws, but if the hassle to execute the things that we want to do is still there, then people say, why should I even bother? Determination to unlock the capital of the region, that we have first to rely on ourselves to work together to make this region better and stronger for each of us as countries, but also for our citizens who are depending on us, especially at this time of grave uncertainty in today's world. Many people are concerned by the impact of climate. We have too many climate refugees within the region. We have the unfortunate determination of actions by the OECD and the European Union that threaten to destabilise many of our governments in terms of the stability of our revenue. And we have equally the talk that sometimes causes us not to know which side of the bed we're going to wake up on because of the difficulties related to trade wars and other, the rise of nationalism in the world today. And we have therefore against that background to create stability and to be able to create predictability for our citizens wherever possible. We hope that by the actions that we've taken today, that we've gone a long way towards being able to give Caribbean citizens the comfort that their leaders are taking that issue seriously. We can't protect you against the climatic shocks in the way that you would like, but we can mitigate it when it happens. And to that extent, the one thing I want to leave you with tonight is that even when there were areas of contention, as they will naturally be between human beings, far less leaders of countries, the one thing that emerged in this meeting was the absolute commitment to push past and to put progress on the regional project ahead of any division that there was between us. And for that, I think that all of the persons who attended should be congratulated because they allowed us to be able to make significant progress on this regional project. Thank you.
Prime Minister.
Thank you very much, members of the media. Ladies and gentlemen, I would just like to thank my colleagues, particularly head of the CARICOM, Prime Minister Holness, and new and most energetic Prime Minister, Prime Minister Motley of Barbados, for accepting the invitation to host this meeting here. The idea was based on the fact that it appeared at one time that the single market and economy was a bridge too far for Caribbean people. If my memory serves me right, I think it was in 2011 that it came off the agenda in CARICOM and was put back there in early 2016. And an urgency had to be attached to it. And it's against that background that we should see the milestones that we have set ourselves and the decisions that we made today as rarely historic. Because I received a text from a union leader this morning, and the text said, congratulations with respect to the initiative on the CSME. We thought that was dead. And that was what we were dealing with because this whole idea of a single market and economy had to be confronted and not just be kicked down the road whenever the CARICOM heads meet and spend 10 minutes on it or half an hour and then put it on to the next meeting and the next meeting and the next meeting. And the next thing you know, the promise of this for the beneficiaries, the people of the region, were never being realised. So we took the decision to have a meeting over a two-day period, and the single item on the agenda would be the single market and the economy. And at that meeting, we would determine whether in fact it was too ambitious for Caribbean people to want to have one economic space, one market, and all the contingents would go with that. And if that was so, today we would have known. On the other hand, if it was that we had what it takes to make the decisions, to do what had to be done, then today we would know. And I'm pleased to announce that the mood of those who attended and those who represented the heads was one of can-do and must-do. And it's against that background that we have been able, in this relatively short period, to have overcome what seemed to have been insurmountable difficulties. Because we are brutally frank, we admitted that there were hurdles that we were unwilling to accept, but time wasn't on our side. From a personal standpoint, my interest in driving this process was triggered by my understanding of the benefits that it could bring to Caribbean people. But more importantly, the Golding Report, which was commissioned in Jamaica, notwithstanding the repetition of my colleagues, my colleagues I should say, because I met with a number of Jamaican cabinet ministers under different circumstances last year, and everybody was saying that, look, this report is not about Jamaica looking for a way out of CARICOM. We are committed to CARICOM, and we want to work towards greater integration. But the report pointed to the frustrations and the cynicism which had become our effort along this way. And it said that if within the next five years we had not accomplished our mission of establishing a single market and economy, that Jamaica would or should? The recommendation is would actually. Jamaica would be taking, considering its status in CARICOM and following the Bahamian model. I don't know how many of you know what the Bahamian model is, is that is, the Bahamas is very clear, a member of CARICOM, but they're not prepared to take part in the single market and economy. If another 60 months had passed and we had not been able to establish pathway and to get the single market and economy operational, at the end of that period, Jamaica's exit in that way would have been disastrous for Trinidad and Tobago and the rest of the CARICOM region, I might say. And when you bear in mind that since 1989, we were on this mission, and by 2011, it was off the agenda. I felt that five years was too much of a threat, and Trinidad and Tobago took the position that is now or never. And we came to this position, and all CARICOM countries agreed today. As a matter of fact, before we got to the final position, we digested the prospect of if some countries were not prepared at the of if some countries were not prepared at this time to take the plunge, those who were prepared should be allowed to go. But we got past that and got virtual consensus where all of us took the plunge today. And it's against that background that I want to thank my colleagues for cooperating beyond all expectation. And Trinidad and Tobago was once again happy to be at the forefront of regional integration. And we trust that this is one commitment that is not likely to be made at a meeting and be forgotten the day after. Because what it does, the single market and economy, it removes internal barriers and it heralds competition among ourselves so as to get the best of us. We don't expect now that as we move towards the removal of internal borders, that our economic growth potential would be stymied by the defense of the obsolete or by the protection of parochial interests. It's a no-holes bar, best man, best woman for the job, and we have a single border. And it draws a number of integrative moves. Our security is now going to be securing not just our territorial island borders, but we are now responsible for wider space because we now have one economic space. And the benefit of that would be seen as we go forward. Those who are engaged in trade, the movement of goods and services, particularly goods, will now be the ones who will be operating this system. And therefore, there's no time and place for one to hide and not implement it because those who are out there, producing, the manufacturers, those who are selling and those who are buying, the petty tariffs of one kind or another, there's no place for that anymore. We are moving towards one economic space, and we have our strengths and we have our weaknesses. And that fear of the single market and economy will create losers and winners, and nobody wants to risk being a loser. Today's decision has put us all in a place where we take the decision that we could all be winners and we could all ameliorate whatever losses there to be had. We are better off together, acting as one unit. Discussions, preliminary discussions were mentioned, I might say honorable mention, that we want to get to a place where we speak with one voice, CARICOM speaks, and be more respected by the rest of the world. And that our diplomacy shouldn't be 14 embassies with 14 lesser functionaries, that we could share a lot of our diplomatic effort on equations that we can work out. And at the end of the day, we'll get the best of our region and we'll earn the respect of our people and the rest of the world. We have accomplished a lot, and I trust that you'll appreciate it.
Thank you, Prime Minister Rowley. We are committed to creating a domestic economic space where Trinidad can see Jamaica as a domestic market and Jamaica sees Trinidad as a domestic market. It is beneficial for all, it expands our economic space. The domestic market means that artificial barriers, tariffs, and other measures will be as far as possible eliminated. It also means that instead of a unidimensional focus on movement of goods, that we take a multi-dimensional focus on goods, people, capital, and information, four key elements built on a basis of security. So all members agreed that we have to have a solid base for security, cooperation, exchange of information, and support for the agencies that oversee the security arrangements for the region. Then we agreed to facilitate business, and Prime Minister Motley would have highlighted the mutual recognition of registration of business, dealing with sanitary and phytosanitary measures, and all the other measures to ensure the ease of doing business and the ease of movement of capital. Then we focused on the complementary movement of people along with the movement of goods. So we have expanded the number of categories of workers that are going to be recognized. We're particularly happy about security workers, we're particularly happy about beauticians with respect to Mia, and barbers with respect to myself and Prime Minister Rowley, well, not Prime Minister Rowley. So the key takeaway is that all the leaders recognize the value and the importance of making a commitment. And I am particularly happy for that, that we're not just coming here saying this is what we're going to do, but you would have realized from Prime Minister Motley's presentation, there were targets and specified timelines, which is in keeping with another commitment, that the institutions to implement the commitments that have been made, that these institutions will be reviewed and they will all be required to function on a results-based management system. I think that is a sea change from how previous commitments have been given. So the people of CARICOM can have a high level of confidence that there will be a material and meaningful change in their lives. Members of the press, colleagues, thank you.
Thank you very much. Chairman, Secretary General has said it's been a very long day, so he won't make any comments, but we'll go, and I could see Peter saying yes, we'll go directly to questions and answers. Yes, recognize you, and you can use, yes, that microphone.
Julia Brown, TV6 News, question to you, Prime Minister Rowley. You had said last week at an event at the Hyatt that the issue of electricity based on gas supply and an advantage you had said in terms of trade with Trinidad and Tobago was something that was a conversation that would be continued among CARICOM heads at this meeting. Was that the case?
We have not dealt at that level with product and prices, but all such conversations are now to be had because what we focused on was creating the economic space. What goes on in that space, the conversation will now begin.
And just a couple of other things quickly, sir. In terms of the issue of tariffs, if you're looking at, you said there is no more space for that, then does that require legislative changes or how would that work?
I don't want to speak for the attorneys general, but there would be a number of parliamentary interventions that would be required to do the kinds of things that were mentioned in the work program. So wherever that is required, the commitment is there to have it done. So I wouldn't speak to the specific amendments or creation of legislation, but there will be a legislative response to what we have agreed to do.
A question quickly to Prime Minister.
Thank you, thank you, TV6. Can I let Peter, and then you can come back?
Just bear in mind that it is...
No, we've been waiting since five o'clock, Mr. Prime Minister, please. Mr. Prime Minister, and Madam Prime Minister, no, no, no. You, Mr. Chairman, you spoke about the, I guess, one of the reasons for holding this summit was the whole question of the implementation deficit with regards to the CSME and what have you. You've also decided on certain timelines from until 2021, the Prime Ministerial Committee meeting at least four times for the year and what have you. We've heard that talk before about implementation deficit, timetables, and what have you. This time around, what is going to make it different based on, one, are there going to be penalties for any country not meeting targets? That's the first question. And for you, Madam Prime Minister, you spoke about the sharing information and accept the working group with regards to the information within CARICOM, information free flow and what have you. Could you be much more specific on that one, please?
Firstly, let me say that there is no supranational power or authority that is going to force members to act. We are leaders elected by our people in our own right. And I think the leaders have accepted and acknowledged that it is within the interest of their respective countries to act to advance CARICOM and the CSME. In Jamaica's case, we took a very instrumental, deliberate approach to our actions. I commissioned a committee to review Jamaica's relations within CARICOM and Carifora. That committee returned 33 recommendations, very detailed. The 33rd recommendation was that if one to 32 was not implemented within five years, then Jamaica would, should reconsider its status within CARICOM to something akin to the status of the Bahamas. I took that to the Parliament of Jamaica, and it was debated of the 32 recommendations on resolution, I believe 10 were accepted. That gave me then the authority to bring the report to CARICOM heads for their consideration. In Montego Bay, it was considered, but given the witty agenda that existed, Prime Minister Rowley wisely recommended that we give it the attention it deserves in a dedicated meeting, which he would host. And let me say, thank you, Prime Minister, for making that recommendation. As a result of that, we are here today. We spent two solid days working on not simply the recommendations that were made in the Goling Report, which I commissioned, but also a paper done by Prime Minister Gonzalez of St. Vincent and Grenadines, and a joint paper done by Prime Minister Rowley and Prime Minister Motley, and indeed, all the contributions made around the table. It brought us to a point where we had to confront all the issues which prevented us in the past from making the commitments. What we have now is a declared commitment from Trinidad and Tobago, a declared commitment from Jamaica, a declared commitment from Barbados, and I would say for all the other countries that are a part of CARICOM, declared in such a way that our respective publics can hold us to account. But there is also the honor of leadership-making commitment. As sovereign nations, as leaders elected, that having given the commitment, we will act. My parliament has given me the authority to take a position. Prime Minister Motley has said that five years is too long, we should do it in much more rapid fashion, agreed by Prime Minister Rowley. And I certainly agree. But there comes a time, if we don't act, because as Prime Minister Rowley said, we have been discussing this from the 80s, and we haven't acted. So there will come a time when we just have to be practical. Are we going to function within CARICOM just for what is beneficial to us and only reap narrow selfish benefits which are not sustainable? Or are we going to create a sustainable platform where we have a more comprehensive view of the space, where we create a platform of security on which goods can move freely from Jamaica to Trinidad to Suriname? A platform where we can utilize the resources that exist, whether it is energy resources in Trinidad, land in Suriname and Guyana, human resources in Jamaica and Barbados, capital that exists all around our region. Prime Minister Motley tells us we have approximately $47 billion of savings sitting down, earning very little. How do we leverage that? We have to create the environment within our region to have that move into investment. And then how do we secure the movement of information, intellectual property? And I believe that is what we have made the commitment to achieve. If we as leaders make this public commitment and then do nothing, we should hang our heads in shame.
Prime Minister, Prime Minister Motley. Let me just perhaps put it a different way, very simply. The biggest sanction that we've put in place today is the poor performance or failure of our individual countries acting alone. If we wanted any more confirmation, we need not have gone further than the newspaper stories in the United Kingdom last week, which made it absolutely clear that the British economy is likely to contract upon the Brexit. And the truth is, Prime Minister Rowley said it eloquently just now, we are always strong working together. I've lived long enough on this earth now to see, when I was a child, he used to say that Barbados was densely populated and overpopulated. And the reality is that I've lived long enough to see that the real truth of the Caribbean is, is that the Caribbean is underpopulated as compared to all other regions in the world. And to that extent, our problem is how best to be able to ensure that, one, we can boost our populations to be able to boost growth, but to do so first and foremost by allowing our people to move around such that where the skills are needed, they can be provided first and foremost by our people. Now, artificial barriers have been added to ocean distances. We can't change the ocean distances, but we can change the artificial barriers. And I think that all of us have come to the recognition that in this world of grave uncertainty, which I pointed out to you earlier, that we have now to act in the singular interests of our nation and our community. With respect to the sharing of information, as you've asked, you can probably tell me what went on in New York today, or what went on in Iowa, or what went on in Texas, but you can't tell me what went on in Belmont. You can't tell me what went on in Kingston, or you can't tell me what went on in Kingstown. And we have therefore to ensure that Caribbean people have access to real-time information. We need to move it to that stage. We have to ensure that the decisions that we take at the level of governments or at the level of regional institutions are shared. Because access to information is what drives people's decisions, and our citizens need that information in order to decide what they plan to do at the individual level and what they plan to do at the level of business.
TV6, or if no one else? Okay.
Good night, Prime Ministers. This is a question for all three of you, and perhaps the Secretary General if he so wishes. Free movement of capital is fundamental to the single economy project. If you accept that, can I get a response from each of you on the transactions that were announced last week? Republic Bank, Scotiabank, Sajiko, Canadian Investors, and Sajiko, Scotiabank, please? Thank you.
Well, since the transactor... Well, since the transactor, main transactor is a Trinidad bank, maybe I should take it first. Basically, we are seeing two things here. One is a business opportunity in the marketplace where Republic Bank took the opportunity to grow outwards from Trinidad and Tobago. This is not new. The bank is already in Africa, we've been looking. But more importantly and a little more disturbingly is that that bank that is being bought by Republic Bank is in fact leaving the region. And that's not a good thing. And when we look at it, it might be seen in the context of the owners of that bank taking a position that banking in the Caribbean is not worth the trouble and not worth the risk. So it might very well be interpreted as a voluntary de-risking. Because if the bank wasn't bought by a local bank, it's quite possible that they may have done something else. And then we have to look to see who else finds the Caribbean unattractive for banking. And that's what we see here. And I've come to that conclusion because when the government of Trinidad and Tobago was advised as to this development, we had a conversation with the main bank. And in that conversation, it was shared with us that there was another bank that they, that this, they looked at, who was prepared to leave and might have been the one to make the news had it not been for certain other developments. So it tells us in the government of Trinidad and Tobago that we need to make ourselves more attractive and to become more resilient to ensure that we have a banking sector that can withstand the conditions for international banking. Because the whole question of FATCA and Global Forum and whatever the penalties for being caught up in the risks of banking in today's world is causing the larger banks in the metropolitan areas to simply say, you colonels out there, not worth the trouble. And that is something that we need to pay attention to.
The bottom line is that Caribbean region has been underperforming in terms of growth for some time now. That's why the heads today took a decision to restructure the CARICOM Commission on Economy and to have a report delivered to us that looks at the strategic options that we can pursue to enhance our growth. As Prime Minister Rowley said, if people are not making the kinds of returns that they want to see, they're going to make decisions to move. Perhaps of concern to us is that we have become accustomed to people operating purely on the basis of loyalty. And the Canadian banks have been in the region for decades, in some instances, a century. Regrettably, however, we live in a world today where capital is very mobile and where people will make decisions to go elsewhere if they can get a better return elsewhere than here. And that's why even on last Friday morning at our Independence Day and speaking to the children of Barbados, I reminded them that nobody in the world owes us a living. And therefore, people will make decisions in their own determined interests. How much ever it may upset us, we can't force anybody to sell to who they don't want to sell to or not to sell. We can regulate the conditions under which it is sold, but as to who they choose to sell to, unless the government is acquiring the asset, we can't force them. So we have to accept that in this world, and you mentioned two. The third one for us is another company that was predominantly owned by Barbadians, Sol, that has gone into a merger with Parkland, a major energy company. And we've seen it happen through other regions in the world. And the Caribbean inevitably will also continue to see these kinds of developments. The difference is that we must not see ourselves simply as victims. We must see, as Republic has in this instance, recognize that they have an obligation to grow as well. And CARICOM, Caribbean companies have also to move beyond the region and to start to identify the opportunities where they too can seek to acquire companies and they too can seek to grow or to merge with others, rather than just seeing this as a case where we are a victim. I don't believe we are a victim. I believe that we are masters of our own fate and in control of our own destiny. But very often, we are not utilizing the resources that we have sufficiently. I hope that the CARICOM Commission on Economy, which has a distinguished set of economists, it has a representative from the private sector in the form of Mr. P B Scott, representative from Labour in the form of Chester Humphrey, representative, two representatives from outside the region. We've invited Mr. Pascal Lamia, a former Director General of the WTO. And Ngozi is a former Minister of Finance of Nigeria, but also importantly, a former Vice President of the World Bank. Because we felt that we wanted an extra-regional perspective to help us on this effort to grow. We have to get it right. And if we don't get it right, we will continue to see institutions choose to leave the region. But in getting it right, we also have to start recognizing that our duty is not just to measure GDP. But let us start measuring GNI, gross national income. Let us start measuring where we are exporting capital and acquiring other entities rather than just seeing ourselves as hapless victims. So I hope that that helps to give us context. We can't remove barriers and not expect to see that some people will come in. The question is, when we remove barriers, we need to go out as well.
Just quickly, in response to the question, I think we, as Caribbean people, we have to accept that we need to grow economies much faster in order to withstand the global changes that are taking place. I think we need to come to the understanding that there is very little sentiment or emotion in business decisions. If businesses can't make a profit, they can't give a service. Because at the same time, all governments are under strict fiscal regimes which do not include subsidies or incentives. So businesses have to operate on efficiency, effectiveness and profitability. And that is the reality that we face. You asked a question earlier, so how are we going to ensure that the commitment made will be implemented? Well, there is a realization that if our governments don't act to create an economic space in which businesses can grow, then businesses will leave. And that is just the hard reality of the world in which we live.
Thank you, Chairman. Before we wrap up, we'll have some comments from the Secretary General.
Just very briefly, Peter asked what was, Peter Rogers asked what was different. I've had the great honor of sitting in more heads of government meetings than I can recall. And I was just reflecting on the three heads sitting here. We had a historic moment where, with Guyana here, you would have had the four leaders that put us on a particular path. I witnessed willing to compromise from strictly national positions to arrive at regional positions for the advancement of the whole. I say so because in the past, there'd be discussions that our leaders sometimes would stick to national positions and sometimes kick the can down the road and the discussion continues. That to me was a difference. And also on the table, although it is not mentioned, I would call it a contingent decision that if all else fails, we must start thinking about what are the possibilities of sanctions. And I think that that underscores the seriousness with which the heads determined to move forward in terms of ensuring that the implementation deficit is addressed. And of course, I was charged with responsibility for ensuring greater efficiency in the regional apparatus. And that's what I should mention that. And I want to thank the three prime ministers for the collective leadership that got us here today. And I think you're going to see that continued leadership going forward henceforth. Thank you very much.